On order, Clayton City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 4, 2019. Let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then our first item today is the consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
I would move approval.
I had one question on...
Which item?
On the minutes, actually.
On the minutes, so 3A. Do you want to pull it or you just have a quick question?
It's a quick question.
Okay.
It seems like we've changed, we've had a distinct change in format. Is that the direction we're going on a go-forward basis? We're not recording any comments, we're only sticking to the actual things that we're on, then the public comments?
I think that's what we talked at a prior hearing because I think it's just taking us, it's taking staff a lot of time to get them down verbatim.
Okay, that's it. That was intentional.
Okay. So is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and none opposed, so that passes unanimously. So then we'll get to move out to an extremely fun item, and I'm super excited about this, and I realize there are many people in the audience for this as well. So this is our recognitions and presentation. Our presentation is today for the inaugural, for the very first recognitions under the Making a Difference program, and that's going to be for an outstanding teacher, mentor, or coach. So many of us, or many of you know the Do the Right Thing program, which was created about eight, nine years ago by then former council member, two-time mayor Hank Stratford, and was also endorsed at the time and ever since by every single city council member, including Vice Mayor Pierce, who was also on the council when it was created. So what the Do the Right Thing program does, it allows the city council to recognize our students in our elementary school, middle school, and high school for six different character traits. They are responsibility, respect, kindness, self-discipline, integrity, and courage. However, this year, in the Do the Right Thing committee, council member Wolf and I talked about expanding that program to also cover adults in our community who are in some way essentially outstanding, exemplary, inspiring, and who just make the rest of us do want to be much better. So we proposed to the council the Making a Difference program, and we presented that to the council some time ago and got an endorsement for it. So today, today we're happy to do the very first recognitions and really to honor those people who are making a difference in our city and in our community, and like I said, just inspire the rest of us to do better. So the very first, we're doing this a little bit differently. The recognitions under this program will be for different themes. So the very first theme we have is for an outstanding teacher, mentor, or coach. We asked our citizens to submit the nominations, and we got actually quite many nominations, and it was actually difficult to choose because we had to narrow it down a little bit. So that was really the difficulty, and we're, sorry, we can't recognize everyone, but we're very lucky to be able to recognize eight of our greatest and finest teachers, mentors, and coaches today. So we are also expecting, is Samantha here? I don't see her yet. So I think we're also actually expecting Assemblymember Tim Grayson's office to be here today, and they are also doing certificates of recognition for these eight individuals. So as soon as I see Samantha, I'll catch her. But, so the way I think we're going to do this, I think I'm going to ask council member Wolf to join me at the front. We're going to ask each of you to come up one at a time in alphabetical order. We're going to talk a little bit as to why you're being recognized, and not in our words, but in the words of the people who nominated you. So we put together some excerpts of what people actually said about you, so it's not our words, but the community's words. So we also have, so we have some certificates from the city, and I think we also expect to have certificates from the assembly member. And then we also have two other special things. We also wanted to partner up with our community organizations and businesses a little bit. So next spring, our Clayton Library is turning 25 years, and they agreed to provide a one year membership to the Clayton Library Foundation to all the recipients. So we have, we actually have a little brochure here, but you'll get an actual membership card from them in a little bit. But Clayton Library is actually the very first library in Contra Costa County that allowed volunteers to be part of their staff, and it's, without those volunteers, we would not have a library today. So it's very special for us to have that library here and be part of our community. And then the other establishment business that recently celebrated 25 years is Ed's Mudville. Everybody knows Ed's at the corner, well, at the corner right there.
Center and Marsh Creek.
Center and Marsh Creek. Maybe I can orient myself. But we have a lot of great local businesses in our town, and Ed's is certainly one of them. And when we talk about community, you can often see on a Saturday, a lot of kids coming from games and whatnot who are enjoying lunch there. So it's really an establishment that fits people of all ages. So we have a small gift certificate that hopefully will get you lunch or something at Ed's as well. So I think with that, why don't we start? And like I said, if you want to come up with me.
Okay.
So I think first, we're going to have Christina Ballard come up. So let me read again, and this is not in our words, but this is in the words of people who nominated you. So Christina is a fabulous Spanish, longtime Spanish teacher, sport coach, and a mentor to many kids in Clayton. She works at Pine Hollow Middle School, and I believe previously also worked at Clayton Valley Charter High School. She's a Clayton resident and very well-known in the community. She takes teaching to an amazingly high level that you have to see it to believe it. She's also been a longtime soccer coach, including Mount Diablo's division of AYSO, and through teaching and coaching has had a positive impact on the children of this community.
And it also, it also says that she has the best toenails. Have a chance to check that out.
So we're going to give you those. I'm going to shake your hand.
Congratulations.
And then, please don't leave. So what we'll do in the very end, we'll take a picture with everyone. I think Tamara is here from Pioneer, so I want to do that. So next, I have Renee Koep. So Renee has served as the PFC president at Mount Diablo Elementary School for many years. She is also a subteacher at Mount Diablo Elementary, Diablo View Middle School, Pine Hollow, and Foothill. She also has mentored kids in our community for many years through the Odyssey of the Mine program. Odyssey of the Mine job is a volunteer job entirely. So Renee helped bring Odyssey of the Mine back to Mount Diablo Unified, Mount Diablo Elementary School about four, five years ago. Renee has also joined the board of the Odyssey of the Mine. She spends many hours putting together spontaneous practices for the kids, both verbal and non-verbal. The kids love these and learn so much about thinking outside of the box, sharing ideas with their teammates, and figuring out how far out of the box they can solve problems. She instills such confidence in the kids.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have Shay Kornfeld. So Shay is an eighth-grade science teacher at Diablo View Middle School in his third year in Clayton. He was actually recognized at a much higher level this year, so we're kind of at the lower end of recognitions. But Shay was honored as one of the two teachers of the year for the entire Mount Diablo Unified Mr. Kornfeld is passionate about science and gets his kids inspired and excited about science, too. He's creative and just an awesome teacher. His classwork involves many hands-on activities that the students enjoy. The eighth-grade science program would not be the same without Mr. Kornfeld.
I used to watch that show, Kornfeld. That was really good.
And next up, we have the family of Teddy McDavid. So come on up.
This is Ted's mom and dad.
And this is actually a posthumous award, so we really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
So if there's anyone that should be honored for the Do the Right Thing award in our city of Clayton, it is Teddy. He was the ambassador of our town. He would always greet you with a smile on his face. Teddy was a coach at Clayton Valley Charter High School, as well as Concord High, Ignacio Valley High, and College Park High School. He had an outstanding talent to be able to inspire people to achieve more than they thought they were capable of. He proudly served as a mentor, teacher, and so much more to so many people. He touched the lives of all those he encountered. He had a tremendous passion for being an inspiration to every human, young or old. The thing that made everyone love Teddy is that he made us all feel loved. We are still saddened from his loss, but his memory will forever live on in all of the lives that he touched.
Thank you.
By the way, in honor of Teddy, they are getting a fund together, a scholarship fund, and it's in honor of Teddy, we call him Teddy Ballgame around here. Teddy Ballgame McDavid Memorial Scholarship Fund. It'll award scholarships annually to students who are attending one of the high schools where he coached basketball and positively impacted the students. And they're also holding an Abachi Ball Tournament in October, and more to come on that. Okay? All right. Thank you.
So next up is Erin McCune. So Erin is the head coach at Dana Hill Swim Team and a PE teacher at Diablo View Middle School. Not only is he a coach and teacher, he's also a well-respected mentor. When I read about the Making a Difference program that called for admirable adults, Erin was the first patient, person that immediately came to mind. He leads by example, showing respect and kindness to his students and his athletes. He has an infectious positive attitude that permeates on the pool deck and on campus. He also brings a fun factor to practice and on the school grounds, playing his music and engaging the kids in a very positive level. And this is a parent who wrote, "I asked my children if they've ever seen Mr. McCune angry. Never. I asked my kids if they've ever seen Mr. McCune condescend or shame his students. Never. I asked my kids if they've ever seen Mr. McCune down. Never. I asked my kids how they feel about Mr. McCune, and before they said a word, their faces softened and they smiled. That says it all. Any adult who spends his days with teenagers, his evenings coaching children ages five through 18, and his summers, including weekends, inspiring kids to do their best and never give up, is making a difference." Next up is Lori Parker. So Lori is a teacher at Diablo View Middle School, and she's also been a teacher in our community for a long time, including at Mount Diablo Elementary School. For several years, she's also been part of the group that takes the eighth-grade students to the Washington DC trip, which is a highlight for many students. She goes above and beyond for each of her students, she brings out the best in them, and really helps them each feel worthwhile and special. She helps the ones who struggle to do their best and try hard. She has high expectations, her students respect her, and work hard to meet her expectations. Her students genuinely love her. She's one of the kindest, nicest teachers in Clayton. She's one in a million. And next, we have Alexandra Pike, and she unfortunately was not able to come here today, but I want to read just a quick excerpt of why she was nominated and why she was, is receiving this honor. And she is one of the teachers in our elementary school. I believe she teaches kindergarten.
Second grade.
Second grade, okay. Thank you. So her unique and engaging way of teaching has been an inspiration to her students. Throughout the school year, she has hosted events and special days that are fun for the kids while also being very educational. A majority of material used for these events have been financed and provided by Mrs. Pike. She's also very forward-thinking through the use of and promotion of technology to further educate her pupils. After hearing her speak at the back-to-school night for an hour, I left the school energized and inspired by my daughter's new teacher. It was very apparent that she is passionate about teaching. A special mention should go to her husband and Clayton's own officer, Pike, as he's very involved in the classroom. And then Mrs. Pike was also among the five finalists for the Mount Diablo Unified School District Teacher of the Year, which means out of the five finalists, we had one of the two winners and one in the finalists out of the entire school district, which makes us pretty special. And then last but not least, we have Gregory Rosewell.
Who's that? Where's Nora? Nora.
Very good. So Gregory is an amazing teacher. He's the leadership teacher at Clayton Valley Charter High School. He is all the things that a teacher should be. He's kind, caring, loves his job, loves the kids, and most importantly, the kids love him. As you know, high school teach, high school kids are a tough sell with teachers. The way he interacts with the kids and the way the kids respect him is awesome. It is so nice to see kids really connect with a teacher. Mr. Rosewell has been at Clayton Valley for a few years, but unfortunately, I believe you are going to be leaving our area, and the parent indicated here that is a huge loss to our community. However, today, we're very honored to recognize a teacher who has positively impacted so many. So why don't we have everyone come up and squeeze into a photo for the pioneer?
Tuya, do you want to give the certificates from the assembly member?
Yes, please. So we're very lucky to have also Assemblymember Tim Grayson's office here. So why don't we come up, and we are going to have Samantha from the Assemblymember's office provide the certificate. Thank you. So let's...
Come up and line up. Face the audience.
Let's turn around. Why don't you go on?
In order?
So can we get in alphabetical order?
Let's see if they can do that.
You are, you're the Rosewell. So I think we're going to have to squeeze a whole lot more to get into one photo.
Wow, this is going to be... Can every, turn in to the center. Turn in to the center.
Do you find that you get in the picture? Okay, that's good. As long as I'm not in the picture.
No, really squeeze in. I checked that many times when I do the photos, and I realized I can't see anybody behind me. You won't be.
I've got a problem with that.
You can't see the camera, it can't see you.
Wow. I can't, I can't get everybody in. Ryder, Ryder, all the way up. CW, snug up. Oh, wow, okay. Squeeze in, tight. Okay, that's about as tight as it goes. Thank you.
So actually, and if all of you could please stay for a few more moments, we have one other recognition. Mr. Napper. Come on up. So as many of you know, Mr. Napper has been with our city for a long, long time, and he is retiring at the end of July. And he was trying to be very quiet about this and not let us know that this is probably going to be one of his last meetings, so we wanted to present to him a proclamation for... So I'm going to read a little bit, and there's a, there's a whole lot more that could have fit into this proclamation, given 18 years of history with our city, but we had to limit it to one page.
Read it and finish, please.
I'm not going to read it and finish. I'm going to read it in English. So, "Whereas Gary Napper has been a city manager in the state of California for over 35 years, and has been Clayton's city manager from October 2001 through July 2019 as our esteemed leader. While Gary was born and raised in Southern California and attended UCLA, and although he cheers for the Dodgers, he has thrived in Northern California and will long be recognized as one of Clayton's very best city managers. And whereas Gary Napper, despite his Southern Cal roots, proved from day one that he was very detail-oriented and thorough, open, and caring, was chosen unanimously as city manager by the council for his financial acumen and management expertise, and has proven to skillfully juggle multiple challenges simultaneously. And whereas Gary Napper has collected association acronyms, such as PMA, where he's one of the longest-serving managers on the Public Managers Association, MPA, where he's been, where he has been active and valued executive member of the Municipal Pooling Authority for risk management for over 17 years and 85 meetings, EMCC as vice chair of the Emergency Medical Care Committee of Contra Costa, representing the PMA. And whereas Gary Napper, as a small-town manager, has wrangled issues from CalPors retirement rates to wild pigs, from numerous grand jury inquiries to joint-use agreements with the Mount Diablo Unified School District, and has creatively instituted a community recreation program for the Diablo View Gym by contract. And whereas for 18 years, Gary has made sure we ended every Friday with a weekly report of city and staff accomplishments, leaving with a chuckle or two for good measure. And whereas despite our smallest city size and consummate salaries, Gary Napper has managed to attract highly qualified, talented staff whom he has generously mentored until they moved on to larger, higher-paying agencies. And whereas Gary Napper, the team leader, shepherded our city through the financial repercussions of the recession, with staff furloughs and pay freezes, always leading by example, not one employee was cut, and essential city services through, curtailed, were maintained. And whereas there were accomplishments too many to enumerate, Gary Napper oversaw a continually balanced budget and increased our city reserve safeguarding community operations against financial downturns or natural calamity. And whereas Gary Napper has seen Clayton evolve with new neighborhoods, including Rachel Ranch, Bridlewood, Diablo Estates, a new Corporation Yard, and the Grove Park, and the Bachi Courts. And whereas, under the careful management of Gary Napper, Clayton has regularly been among the safest cities in California, and is currently number two for the best streets in the Bay Area. And whereas Gary has said he was drawn to the small size of Clayton by its cohesive council and balanced budget, he has managed to make our community stronger and financially more secure with his vice-conservative leadership. And whereas tonight is Gary's last official council meeting, putting the 2020 budget to bed before he retires at the end of July, and taking some well-earned vacation time, he will be in his usual position as a parade captain for the Fourth of July parade, where residents can stop by to wish him well. Now, therefore, I, Tuya Catalano, Mayor of the city of Clayton, on behalf of the entire city council, commissions, city staff, and the community, do hereby proclaim our heartfelt gratitude to Gary Napper for outstanding service rendered to our community as a city manager, and wish him a well-deserved retirement, and do by hereby proclaim July 31, 2019, to be the Gary Napper Day in the city of Clayton.
Thank you all. Please be seated. Can I speak for just a moment, Tamara? Tamara, can I speak for a moment?
She's going to speak for a moment.
Don't ever underestimate the power of the press. Thank you so much. This is not something that I was, you know, that I sought after. As you all know, I wanted to go out just quietly, but it's been an amazing career, 42 years in local government, 35 as a city manager. As indicated, I started in Morro Bay at age 29 as their city manager, and that's a lot of city council meetings. It's a lot of meeting individuals, getting budgets to bed, attending city council meetings, and so forth. I appreciate all the recognitions that are in here and accomplishments as well, but I just, you know, what do I remember most and what will I take with me? It's not the accomplishments that we did as a team in serving the community, it's the bonds, the associations, and the friendships I made along the way. That's the strength of an organization, that's the strength of a community, and you showed it tonight. And that's what makes Clayton strong. And so I have no regrets. The road was bumpy at times in terms of 42 years. It was not without its ups and downs, but it's been a career that I do not regret at all, helping communities be better, helping communities thrive. Just an anecdote, I didn't know what I wanted to do when I entered college, and so I went into the Student Center and I took one of those crazy aptitude tests, some of the teachers might remember those. And then they called me back about a week later and sat me down and said, "Well, Gary, we've got three choices for you for a career. The first is you can be a florist. The second is you could be an undertaker," this is a true story, "and the third, have you ever considered going into city management?" And I didn't know what that was. I was involved in high school, student body president, and other things, but I'm thinking about that now, and isn't city management a bridge between those two? You know, you start with an undertaker, death is like taxes, and then you take those taxes and you create blossoms and bloom in life. And so thank you all for your support. Just a shout-out to our vice mayor, Julie Pierce, who was on the city council that hired me, my long-term lasting friend, and I've appreciated that friendship and that leadership. So thank you very much. And thank you all for staying to hear this.
Now, now let's take a quick picture.
Was it? I'll come back under public comment period.
This is tricky with the podium. Here we go. Would you?
Great, thank you. Are we adjourned?
We're not quite adjourned, so thank you, everyone.
We'll talk soon, I hope.
So with that, we will move on to reports.
That is the quickest clearing of house.
You can tell they all wanted to say for the ledger.
The important stuff. Cut to the important stuff. So I think we have Mr. Cavidia here for the Planning Commission. And Samantha, thank you very much to Assemblymember Tim Grayson for doing and being part of this.
Thank you for us.
Thank you. Go ahead, Frank. You have to follow all of that.
Is this sing-on? Yes, it is. All right, good evening, city council members, Mayor Catalano, Vice Mayor Pierce, Councilman Diaz, Wolf, and Juan. My first report, I'll do my best not to do it incorrectly. The Planning Commission met on Tuesday, May 28. All commissioners were present, Chairman Basam Adwell, Peter Klobin, A.J. Chippero, William Gale, who was unexpected, did show up at the last minute, and myself. Commissioner Klobin did want reflected in the minutes, and that had to do with the park, and mainly just someday in the hopes that those of us who like the game of soccer would like for those fields to be repaired, and if there's ever a possibility that we could have a turf field in Clayton, boy, would not be a hit, we can all dream. And that was pretty much it, are there any questions?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that then, we do not have a report from the Trails and Landscaping Committee, that brings us to city manager and staff, Mr. Napper.
Thank you, Mayor Catalano, just a couple of items, the council knows this, but for the members of the public, when will the weeds be whacked and when is the fire abatement time period? It has been a moving time period by the Contra Costa Fire Prevention District Fire Marshal, who declares when weeds must be abated for fire hazard purposes, because as everyone realizes, we've had late rains this year, and if you cut weeds too soon and then there's free irrigation from above, then the weeds will grow back and it costs everyone more money in order to make a second pass. They originally had a date in May, then they moved it to June 9th, and just to let the public know, weed abatement on public properties as well as private properties must be done by June 16th, that's the deadline. What happens after June 16th, well, if they don't push the date out, then the fire district could go and, as they examine the properties in town, could actually send a citation with a fine to those property owners that leave their properties in a fire hazard condition. And then secondly, Mr. Gavidia is on the Planning Commission, but the time period has come that we have two seats on the Planning Commission that will expire by term of office, those two seats will start on July 1st, we are and have posted online that announcement, but I wanted to make it known tonight as well to members of the public that might be hearing it, so if anyone is interested in serving on the Planning Commission, the application is online, but if that's not your thing, you can come into City Hall and our city clerk will give you an application, and please fill that out, those applications are due on June 13th, and applicants are subject to an interview before the entire city council, which interview is open to the public, and then later that evening, the city council would make its determination on which two citizens to fill the seats. The only requirements are that you be a registered voter and that you live in Clayton, and that's it, and a willingness to serve. Thanks, Mayor.
Great, thank you, and that brings us to the council reports, we'll start with Mr. Juan.
I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony, I think, as we all did, it was a pretty moving ceremony. I also continued discussion with Ms. Klein King about, with the PFC regarding ongoing traffic safety discussions, so that discussion continues.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Thank you, it's been a busy two and a half weeks or so, I guess it's almost three weeks since our last meeting. I had a meeting with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and the Association of Bay Area Governments to talk about where we go from here on legislation and some of the items that we've been working on for the last several weeks. Also had a meeting with the Housing Legislative Working Group, it was our wrap-up meeting. You will be interested to know that of all the comments that were given by the Housing Legislative Working Group, which met weekly for five weeks, two of the meetings went to nearly four hours long, where we were talking about the various housing legislation in Sacramento, we did not make any recommendations to the official boards of ABAG and MTC, however, all of the comments were transcribed by bill and by county for the members to read. When they came to the two boards, the meeting of the legislative committees were eight hours long, where they met jointly, the ABAG meeting took four hours to do the legislation, MTC only took two hours, which is actually an incredibly long time for them to deal with legislation. And what came out of that was a really good recognition of the comments that came from local government throughout the Bay Area, and it was surprising to some how similar the comments, big and small, urban, rural, suburban, were. And one of the really good things that has come out of this is that we have established a much better working relationship with some of our representatives in Sacramento. And in fact, yesterday afternoon, we had an ad hoc conference call with the MTC and ABAG representatives to talk about AB 1487, which is Assembly Member Chu's bill, talking about establishing a housing association for the Bay Area, which would establish a whole other level of government, which we unanimously said we did not want. That came out of the working group, it also came out strongly from ABAG and from MTC, which normally doesn't do that kind of thing, but they as well felt that that was not the way to go. And so we are working very, very closely with Assembly Member Chu and his staff to make that legislation something that can work for the Bay Area, or if we can't get it there, he has agreed he will probably dump it. So we're working hard, we have a couple of weeks left to make some serious changes or it won't make it this year, and, which means it wouldn't make it in time for the November ballot in 2020, because there are deadlines in Sacramento, it gets complicated. But anyway, it's been a really good working relationship, and his staff has been calling every few days to check in and see what they can do to make things better, so that's really good, and been calling a lot of folks in the Bay Area, so that's encouraging that somebody up there is actually listening for once. Also had the honor of attending the Memorial Day Ceremony, which was very, very well-done, crisply done, beautiful day, and a very moving ceremony. Attended the Art and Wine Wrap-Up Meeting, and while that's not technically a city event, I have to say it was one of the better events that's been produced by our community volunteers, and it turns out that it looks like they've set records in how much they raised, all of which goes back into the community in the form of scholarships and things like that. On Saturday alone, many of you were there and recognized what a beautiful day it was, they cleared over $90,000 just on that one day. So this is no pea-sheer organization we have here in Clayton, raising money for our community, so they deserve a little bit of recognition. The following week, I attended the California Transportation Foundation Awards, where award-winning projects throughout the state were recognized for the difference that they've made in technology, in cost savings, in really bringing the region forward. And the following day, I was also in Sacramento at a California Council of Governments Board Meeting, which was quite interesting, we did a lot of talking there again about legislation, and had some visitors from the Hill. We had a Contra Costa Transportation Authority ad hoc committee meeting, starting to plan for a potential measure, augmented measure, to Measure J, which is our transportation half-cent sales tax, to add another half-cent sales tax and put it on the primary ballot in March. So we are working very quickly on putting together a expenditure plan, and so far, the polling looks really good, and the expenditure plan sort of really broad outline so far looks really, really creative, and builds on what we did with Measure J, but looks at really making people's commutes more predictable and reliable. I had the honor in the mayor's stead yesterday to entertain a Ukrainian delegation, we had five folks that came from the Ukraine, they were all either mayors or what they call council secretaries. And in the Ukraine, the mayor is actually the city manager as well, and has a couple of employees who work for them for pay, but the city council is all volunteer. And it was interesting, because a couple of the members actually did speak English, and I asked one of them, who was also the youngest one, who had been a kindergarten teacher before she became the mayor, and I asked her how the pay compares, she actually made more as a kindergarten teacher than she makes running the entire community, which is sort of a testament to how maybe they've got that side of the pay scales right side up, giving teachers the kind of pay that they certainly deserve for educating future generations. But it was very interesting to hear some of the challenges that they have, and how still many of their work is dictated still by the state, and things like the police department has a secretary of police at the Capitol, and all of the police force throughout the nation work for that person, they don't work for the cities. And so they have a bit of work to do yet in determining their own futures, but it was a fascinating meeting. I also met with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Audit Committee, did the interviews with the new auditor, the continuing auditors, Messias Genie, they do interviews with the Executive Board, and I'm also on the AB 1487 Ad Hoc Subcommittee, who will be meeting on a regular basis over the next few weeks with the Assembly Member, that's it.
Perfect, thank you, Councilmember Wolf?
Okay, I, as everybody did, attended the Memorial, Memorial Day, and was, as Vice Mayor Pierce said, it was very well-done, very moving, and some really good speakers they had, especially the woman who came up and just talked off the hip, she was really, really funny and really good. And I was at the concert in the Grove, raising money to keep those going for next year, I think we raised around $2,500 or something in that one concert, in that general range.
When you count the papers for the hat contributions, right.
Yeah, for the hats, so that's a really...
But you beat me by about 50 bucks.
By 50 bucks, all right, and I think we're out there again this week, we're out there again next, or this week, mixed nuts this week, that'll be fun. And then, let's see, the CBCA attended that meeting at Oakhurst, and, oh, by the way, I've been, I've been taking a lot of emails and a couple of voicemails this week, especially with regard to speeding and running traffic lights and running stop signs, especially the stop sign issue, and there's been some chatter on social media as well. One woman wanted me just to remind people that stop signs mean stop, not yield, not run, not go, but stop, so I've done my piece there for the chief, all right, and I think that's it for now.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Diaz?
Thank you, on the 23rd, I attended the East Bay Division Meeting of the League of California Cities over in Antioch, we had a very enlightening presentation from the executives of CalPERS, where they touted the fact that they had moved from 68% to 71% of their goal, and, well, I was later informed that we're at nearly 75% by our finance manager, which I thought was quite accomplished, I wish I'd have known that then when I could have raised my hand, but it was, it had gone on long enough and we didn't need to prolong it. Also attended the concert Brick House on that last Saturday night, also on the 27th, I was also at the, and attended the Memorial Day Ceremony put on by the VFW at Post Number 525, very well-presented, and we had a wonderful day commemorating all those individuals who gave the most for this country. Also attended the Art and Wine Wrap-Up, and on the 30th, the CBCA General Membership Meeting, which wrapped things up for them. I did want to reflect, I was moved, I had forgotten all about this, when Gary mentioned that when he went to college and he was graduated, and they gave you three options, one was going to the funeral business, I guess. Well, interestingly enough, after spending a professional career in telecommunications, I got appointed by the governor to go up and run a state agency, and after about a year and a half in that, I was sitting in my office and the phone rings, and it was the governor's office, and they said, "Listen, we have a problem we want you to go take care of," and I go, "What is that?" And they want me to run the cemetery board for the State of California, and I want to tell you, for those, and that's a very professional career, it's a tough one, but at that time, many of the cemeteries that were throughout the state that we regulated were run by families. In fact, I recall going into one cemetery office, and in the office, they had the grandchild in a crib, they had the grandmother and the granddaughter running the business, and the father was helping escort the deceased around for presentation, but it's a very noble career, and you probably missed something that I had to experience, and that was that, thank you.
Great, thank you, so a couple items, I also attended on Thursday, May 23rd, the California League of Cities East Bay Division Meeting in Antioch, and yes, it was a bit one-sided presentation, given it was given by CalPERS representatives, and I think the audience, which is other council members and mayors and vice mayors, asked some tough questions in the end, and we got some roundabout answers in some of those, so it was interesting. Also on Monday, May 27th, attended and was honored to speak at the Memorial Day Service. Then on Wednesday, May 22nd, and Friday, May 24th, together with the Vice Mayor, in the capacity of the city manager hiring Subcommittee, we had meetings with some of the principals from a couple of the recruiting companies, we had submitted proposals, and then had some, held office hours on May 24th, and then also had some CBCA activities, including getting to actually deliver some of those monies back into the community, so one of the things that CBCA does is an annual scholarship program, this year they gave out $35,000 to graduating high school seniors, so I got to attend the Clayton Valley Charter High School Senior Award Ceremony and hand out those on behalf of CBCA. So that's it for me, so let's move on to our, we don't have any other reports, so let's move on to public comment, which is a portion of the meeting when any member of the public can address the council for three minutes if they have any, anything they'd like to say, any non-agenda items. I don't have any speaker cards, so if there's anybody who'd like to come up, seeing none, we'll close public comment, which brings us then to our public hearings, we have, our first item is a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the proposed City of Clayton budget for fiscal year 2019-20, a five-year capital improvement program, CIP, budget for fiscal years 2019 through 2024, and the city employee salary schedule for fiscal year 2019-20, and I believe we have Mr. Mizuno back from Paternity League to provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor Catalano, so I can't promise that this will be as inspirational as the presentations in the award, or city manager speaking, however, it will be greater than 45 minutes.
His mic? Your mic's not on.
Well, it's not on, okay.
Start over.
Okay, is it on now? Okay, great, so what I was saying is, it won't be quite as inspirational as the first part of the meeting, but it will be greater than my last presentation, so, which is good.
It's still not on.
So, prior to this, okay.
Okay, well, you heard that first part, I won't...
like to say, any non-agenda items. I don't have any speaker cards, so if there's anybody who would like to come up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment, which brings us then to our public hearings. We have, our first item is a public hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the proposed City of Clayton Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-20, a five-year capital improvement program, CIP budget for fiscal years 2019 through 2024, and the city employee salary schedule for fiscal year 2019-20. And I believe we have Mr. Mizuno back from paternity leave to provide a report.
Thank you, Mayor Calhoun. So I can't promise that this will be as inspirational as the presentations and the award or city manager speaking. However, it will be greater than the 45-minute...
His mic? Your mic's not on.
Well, it's not on. Okay.
Start over.
Okay. Is it on now? Okay, great. So what I was saying is, it won't be quite as inspirational as the first part of the meeting, but it will be greater than my last presentation. So, which is good.
It's still not on.
Prior to this. Okay.
Okay. Well, you heard that first part. I won't repeat that again. So prior to this meeting on May 21st of 2019, a comprehensive analysis of the budget covering specific funds, departments, and projects, as well as citywide challenges and topics, was presented. And this meeting, the purpose of this is to provide a more high-level synopsis of the budget and then turn over the item back to the city council for consideration for approval following the public hearing. So prior to the introduction meeting, the last city council meeting, the city council budget subcommittee met with staff to review the budget on April 23rd, 2019, and was supportive of the draft budget figures. Since the previous draft budget that was presented to the city council, no changes have been made to the current budget included in tonight's agenda packet. And staff is unaware of any new developments that would significantly impact any of the budget items or assumptions to date. Any subsequent budgetary impacts that occur after the hypothetical adoption of tonight's budget could be addressed in a mid-year budget adjustment or meeting, including potentially the two items that will be discussed as action items following this item. So in total, the fiscal year 2019-20 budget includes proposed appropriations of $13,377,663. So that actually represents a slight decrease over the city's total budget in the prior fiscal year of about 0.52%, so a modest decrease. And that decrease wasn't a result of any significant policy for any cuts or anything. It was just due to the full utilization of Measure J reserves to complete two significant capital improvement projects this fiscal year, which were the Keller Ridge Collector Street Rehabilitation Project and the 2018 Neighborhood Streets Program. So that resulted in a significant capital investment this year for our city local streets, which next year, we won't quite exceed that amount because we don't have the sufficient reserves. So this pie chart provides an illustration of total city expenditures by fund, excluding the city's capital improvement program, as well as fiduciary funds, which are generally not considered part of the ongoing operating budget and fluctuate significantly depending on the amount of reserves that are available. So one item to note in this pie chart is that nearly three-quarters, or 73.8% of the budget is composed of two large funds, that being the general fund and the Landscape Maintenance District Fund, or CFD 2007-1, which is our Melrose Community Facilities District for Restrictive Purpose Tax. So that, those are actually two of the 17 funds that are presented in this chart. So that gives the members of the public an idea of how significant these funds are to our goals and our operations within the budget. So the largest share of the budget belongs to the general fund, composing about 55.96% of the total operating budget, which is the primary funding source for all of our basic and essential public services, primarily consisting of public safety, planning, engineering services, as well as the legislative and administrative support for each of those functions. Arguably, one of the most important things contained in the budget is what is the bottom line? That's always the question we ask for, what is the bottom line for the general fund? Are we better off or are we worse off? Is there structural deficit or are we as a structural surplus or excess? And we are pleased to note that in the adopted budget, after consideration of proposed revenues and proposed appropriations for next year, the general fund is projected to close next year with an operational excess of $39,750, which is fairly modest compared to the prior year, but it has been pretty consistent with many of our budgets. So it's a very balanced budget, all things considered. So this results in a projected general fund reserve balance on June 30th of 2020 of $5,564,445. And one item to note that's significant is that the opening reserves for next fiscal year's budget of approximately $5.5 million, after backing out any earmarks of prior excesses approved by the city council, is 1.16 times higher than the proposed general fund appropriations for next fiscal year. So that demonstrates that the fiscal policies in the past and currently have led to a strong financial position for the city, certainly compared to many of our fine local neighboring agencies and agencies up and down the coast of California. So on an annual basis, the city is required to prepare the Prop IV or GAN limit for city council approval at a public meeting pursuant to state law. This effectively establishes an appropriations cap, or the maximum amount that the local agency is allowed to levy via taxes for appropriation. So the prior year GAN limit was reviewed by the city's independent auditors, Cropper Accountancy Corp., who issued a report on the GAN limit dated September 28th, 2018, and noting no exceptions to that GAN limit that was prepared internally. So the cap is annually adjusted using the prior year adopted figure, which was reviewed by our auditors, and as well as adjusted for the California Cost of Living Change, as published by the Department of Finance, and the regional change in population, which is also published by the Department of Finance, California Department of Finance. So after including those two adjustment factors, this results in a fiscal year 2020 appropriations limit of $11,467,664. So as no surprise, the city of Clayton is again significantly under the cap, well short of the statutory cap, with a gap of approximately $6.5 million. So we're well in compliance with that provision, but it's practice every year to present this and to show to the state that we are in compliance. So with that being said, I would like to pass the matter back to the city council for consideration in public hearing. And I'd also like to add just thank you to all the members of the city staff team, the department heads, for all of their time in putting this budget together. Every year, it's a very grueling process, starting almost immediately after the mid-year budget gets adopted in February. And all of their inputs and the meetings and phone calls, the support of the city council throughout this process, and the support of the city council budget subcommittee, which is Councilmember Jeff Wan and Councilmember Jim Diaz, thank you very much. And then, of course, for our city manager, who has been absolutely instrumental through every budget that I've worked on, bringing to the city council for approval. He's been a tremendous leader for staff and for myself and has been indescribably a great mentor for me as well. And just thank you for all of your input, Mr. Napper, and wish you the best in your retirement. You're very well-earned retirement, and I will take all of the knowledge that I've learned here and make sure that the next place runs just as well fiscally. Do my best. So I won't say who that is.
Great. Thank you very much. As always, very thorough and very easy to understand and a lot of work that goes into it. Are there any questions from staff? Any clarification questions?
I had a question.
Member Wan?
Well, first, I want to say thank you. You've consistently been able to address the many, many detailed questions that I've had over the short time that we worked together. So I appreciate that. I think it's a reflection of the high-quality work, so thank you.
We speak the same language, the oddities.
I did have just a kind of a quick question. You mentioned Cropper. They're engaged for the FY19 audit. Is that correct?
Correct.
And is, do they have a, are they running into time on when they have to roll off? Or are they rotating partners? Or do we have an expectation on the FY20? When does that come up?
At this point, we have not been approached by the auditors for a contract extension. However, the current contract does expire with the conclusion of the audit for fiscal year 2019. So interim has been scheduled for that audit, and we've been planning the final fieldwork. So I'll actually still be with the city for the interim process that's coming up in a few weeks.
That's in June?
Yes, that's the last week of June. And then I believe final would occur sometime in the fall, generally either September, early September, or maybe even August. And at some point, the city will need to consider, pursuant to state law, whether or not it's appropriate to go out to bid and rotate audit firms following competitive bid process, or if it's deemed acceptable to continue with our current independent auditors, assuming that they can meet the statutory requirement to rotate to another qualified audit partner that has experience in governmental audit.
And Cropper has not been in that role for, how many years have they been with the city right now? It's not that many years.
This is the third year.
Third year, maybe?
Yeah, this is, this contract. There was a contract prior to that. I don't know the exact number of the years. The law, I believe, as of fiscal year 2014, allowed for seven consecutive years, and then a rotation was mandatory. So 19 meets our cap. So it has been, they have covered a number of years with the city. Potentially, just off the top of my head, between maybe nine or eight fiscal years.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, why don't we open up the public hearing to receive any public comments? I do not have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to come up, just please come on up. Go ahead.
I just have a question that hopefully you can address. So in looking at the material that the Planning Commission reviewed versus the, what's in the agenda packet for the projects making up the 2.99 million, the first three projects that are about one and a half million were not part of that review of alignment and general plan, and I was just curious as to why that was. That's, I don't have a concern with it, I was just curious.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have in front of you what those three ones were?
Yeah. It's 10379...
At the mic. At the mic.
Oh, thanks.
10379, 10400, 10422.
So we do have our Community Development Director here tonight, but I can say that those are old projects. So 10379 is the Pine Hollow Entryway Improvement Project. Just, I think, I recall that's it, just off the top of my head. And that is a project that was adopted maybe 10 years ago, but the funding wasn't available to do it. So it is possible that that's already gone to the Planning Commission for consideration for approval. I believe that's the case. I'm not sure if the Community Development Director has anything else to add.
Go ahead, Mr. Walter.
Mayor Catalano and commissioners, I should say, councilmembers. At the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was looking at projects for general plan conformity, and they were looking at projects that had not yet been given general plan conformity determinations. I would think that the projects that were referred to probably are older projects that had already gone before the Planning Commission and received a determination of general plan conformity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Great. Thank you. Okay, great. Well, then we will close public hearing. Then are there any final budget modifications by the council? If not, then I'd be looking for a motion on a resolution to approve it.
I would move a motion to adopt a resolution approving the city budget for fiscal year 2019-20, and a five-year CIP budget for fiscal year 2020 through 2024, and the city employee salary schedule for fiscal year 2019-20.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mizuno.
Thank you.
And then that brings us to our second public hearing, which is Item 7A, which is a public hearing to consider the introduction and first reading of a proposed city-initiated ordinance number 488, extending the existing time extension waiver of certain onsite parking relief for specified land uses in the Clayton Town Center area for an additional three years through June 30th, 2022. And I believe we have a report from Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mayor Catalano and members of the city council. This agenda item is a proposal to further extend a city-initiated ordinance to waive or partially reduce onsite parking requirements for certain land uses in the town center area of the city of Clayton. The parking waiver or partial reduction of required onsite parking focuses primarily on retail and restaurant uses. These uses typically are more active, bringing larger numbers of people and vibrancy to an area. The city's Planning Commission considered this item at its recent May 14th meeting and recommended that the city council go forward and further extend this parking waiver. Staff has attached a draft ordinance to your agenda report for that purpose. The town center area generally extends from Clayton Road to the north, to High Street to the south, and from Marsh Creek Road to the east, and to Oak Street to the west. The town center parking waiver ordinance originally was adopted by the city council in June of 2007 for an initial three-year period. This ordinance has been amended to extend it three times since then and is due to expire at the end of this month, June 2019. The purpose for adopting and subsequently extending the ordinance has been primarily for two purposes: to provide a financial incentive to bring more active land uses and development to the community's town center, and to create a development pattern in the town center area that is compact with buildings and their internal uses and activities adjacent to one another to encourage a more vibrant, connected, and pedestrian-oriented area, instead of an area that is separated by parking lots, which is more typical of suburban development. Overall, the objective is to create a pattern of development that is more Main Street than a suburban shopping center. As described in your agenda report on this matter, these objectives are supported by both the city's adopted town center-specific plan and the city's general plan. The schedule for parking waivers and/or reductions during the waiver period is located in subsection 17.37.03OD of the Clayton Municipal Code. This schedule is within an attachment to your agenda report. I'd like to give you an example of what we're talking about. On parcels that are less than or equal to 10,000 square feet, if a retail sales or restaurant use is proposed on the first or second floor, there would be a 100% waiver or reduction of the required onsite parking. For office or personal service uses on a second floor, also a 100% parking reduction. On larger parcels, over 10,000 square feet in the town center area, where there's a retail sales or restaurant use on the first or second floor proposed, the reduction would be 75% in terms of onsite parking. And for office or personal service uses on second floors, 25%. While the intent of the onsite parking waivers and reductions in the ordinance was to incentivize certain types of development and overall development pattern, the council established a threshold of a total of 200 spaces for waivers and reductions, and required monitoring and reporting by the Community Development Director on the conditions in the town center area to make sure that over time, as waivers and reductions would be provided, that parking in the town center area would not be adversely impacted. Thus far, there have been three projects that have received waivers or reductions. Those projects are the Creekside Tarex Mixed Use Project, the Flora Square Commercial Project on Center Street, and the Skipalini Family Bachi Courts in the town center area. The spaces are 21 for Creekside, 36 for Flora Square, and 20 for Skipalini Bachi Courts. I'd like to point out that in terms of going to commission, Planning Commission on this item, we had not seen the 20 for Skipalini Bachi Courts. That's an addition since the commission. However, the total, the total is 77, well under the 200-space threshold. The town center area, as in 2007, is still in need of additional development activity to achieve its full potential, and the vision, as stated in this... to achieve its full potential and the vision as stated and described in the Town Center specific plan. The staff and the commission both agree that further extending this parking waiver would provide an important measure, incentive, a tool, for the community in terms of working with potential development opportunities to bring new development or expansion of existing development in the Town Center area. And as I also mentioned in the staff report, it's also a matter of development form. In the general plan, the idea is to create a more compact form in Clayton's Town Center. This parking waiver provision certainly does that by really bringing buildings and activities closer together and not having them separated by parking lots. Therefore, tonight, the staff, as is the commission, is recommending that you move forward with this extension, extending the Town Center parking waiver until June 30th, 2022 by doing the following. Adopt a motion to have the city clerk read the Extension Ordinance, Ordinance Number 488, by title and number only, and waive further reading, and, following the clerk's reading, by motion, approve Ordinance Number 488 for introduction. Thank you, Mayor Catalano and council members. I'd be pleased to respond to any of your questions.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions of staff?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Juan.
The recommendation is to extend for three years?
That is correct, yes.
Is there a contemplation of a longer waiver period, given that we seem to be waiving it regularly since 2007?
It's been extended, as noted in the agenda report, for three years on a consistent basis over time. I think the three-year period does give the community an opportunity to work with the development community, evaluate opportunities that may come forward, and still provides you an opportunity for further extension. I would recommend continuing to use the three-year period.
Okay. Is there any significant level of effort required for the monitoring aspect that you described earlier? I don't, I don't imagine that there's, I think, probably when development is proposed, they apply for a certain amount of waiver, and that just, that gets logged somehow. We only have three, you mentioned, so.
I mentioned three, and as you know, I believe, one of the three projects actually is, is entitled but not built. Creekside. And so it continues to be extended year to year. So we haven't had the, the impact of that to date. But keep in mind, with individual projects, as they come forward through the commission and onto council typically, there are traffic studies and reports as part of the evaluation of the individual projects. So as, say, a new development proposal would come forward in the Town Center area, typically there would be an evaluation of, of the circulation impacts, parking, demand, et cetera, as part of the project review, and give us, as staff and the community, an opportunity to, again, consider this ordinance on a project-by-project basis.
Okay. Do we, do we actually have the ability to make the waiver permanent?
You do have the ability, not as noticed at this time, given what's before you at this time, that isn't set up that way. You could consider that at a future date. You could ask that that come back for consideration, and we could take a look at that. My only sense is that as development occurs in the Town Center area, you, you may want to continue to have what you have now. You have a threshold, you have individual project review, and you have the director on notice to be evaluating against this threshold. I think that puts the community in a position of being able to monitor activity, see its impacts, and, you know, at some point in time, as the area builds out, or more builds out, you could, you know, decide on maybe altering, as you're suggesting. Right now, I think you're, you're in a position where you're, you're providing the incentive, you have monitoring in place. I think that the objective now really is to try to, in ways, be more proactive in terms of bringing development opportunities to the Town Center area, which is a challenge, as I think we all know, but that maybe is the focus. And this is a tool. This is a meaningful tool in terms of attraction of new development.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Napier, you were gonna...
Yes. Yes, and...
They've already cut you off.
It's on vacation.
Uh-oh, they're all turned.
Did you?
Yeah.
Hello?
They're getting touchy.
In further response to Councilmember Juan, originally, when the program was introduced, the concept was, with the redevelopment agency that the city had at the time, was to provide a limited time period in order to encourage some of the recalcitrant property owners to perhaps take advantage of it. It did help to a certain degree, because you can see Flora Square came on. If, if this program were not available, or had not been available at the time, the most probably Flora Square could have constructed onsite and still accommodate onsite parking would have ultimately wound up as a kiosk, and maybe serving, you know, drive-through coffee or something along those lines. A great question on whether it could be extended. I think that's worthy of taking a look at. I would recommend that we, you know, note that at the staff, and then let our next Community Development Director and next city manager evaluate the program at that time and come back to the City Council with recommendations.
I think that's a good idea.
Any other questions of staff?
Okay, so let's open it up for a public hearing. Again, I don't have any speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public hearing. Are there any other discussion, any other comments? Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yeah, I would just make one comment. It wasn't for this particular program, but it was for a parking study that we did for the Contra Costa Transportation Authority some time ago, and for ABAG, on our capacity in our downtown. And I remember Jeremy Graves and I actually went out and counted every single parking place in the downtown, both on private property and on public property, and then interviewed all of the businesses to see how many employees they had, and then going by their square footage and all of that, tried to figure out what the capacity needed was and what we had as surplus. And that was sort of part of the study, of our capacity for downtown development. And so we realized that we had more than enough parking for now, but should we get some kind of building boom, we might actually run short on parking, and oh, wouldn't that be too bad? Although on some bocci nights and concert nights, you would think we're very short already. But at one point, we even talked about the idea, if, if things got so robust downtown that we could actually build a small garage on top of the Endeavor Hall parking lot if we needed to. That would be something to aspire to need, wouldn't it? To have that much business in our downtown. But for now, this is an incentive. I don't know on a 10,000-square-foot lot, Gary, if you could even get a drive-through on there, because I have a feeling with all the turning radius and clearances and stuff you'd need, and room for garbage cans, which we do need to do next time, that, that you could even get that on if you had to have parking on there, too. So those lots are really, really small, and unless somebody amalgamates more than one lot, they're not going to get a very big project on there if they have to put parking in there, too. So it's a good thing to look at, and I wish we had the problem of, of needing to, to regulate the parking, but we don't.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
I'll just add to my, I do remember when you looked at the parking study, maybe it wasn't in this context, but, I mean, there was a sort of a demand and supply question that was really part of this, too. In terms of, in terms of three years or longer, I think the three years actually makes sense. It's not a huge effort by the City Council to look at this every three years, and I think it's hard to anticipate what change circumstances we could have, autonomous cars, whatnot. So, I mean, I'd rather look at it every three years than put a longer timeline on it. But overall, I think it makes sense, and, you know, I think we can all vision, we would not have bocci courts, we would not have Flora Square without this waiver, so makes all the sense to me. So if there's no other comments, then I'm looking for a motion.
I would move approval to a motion to have the city clerk read Ordinance Number 488 by title and number only, and waive further reading.
Second.
On that motion, it's been first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Ordinance Number 488, an ordinance amending Section 17.37.030(c) waiver period of the Clayton Municipal Code for the purpose of extending from June 30th, 2019 through June 30th, 2022, the parking waiver provision in the Town Center area, ZOA-03-19.
Thank you. And then I'm looking for an actual motion on the item.
I would move approval of approving the introduction of Ordinance Number 488 with the finding that the action does not constitute a project under SEQA.
Second. So it's been, go ahead. It's been first and seconded, and it looks like there was a rush to second it, so. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes also unanimously. Which then takes us to action items. Our first action item is Item 8A, which is a consideration of award of professional services contract to CPS HR Consulting in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for the performance of executive recruitment services for selection by the City Council of the next Clayton city manager. And I'll let Vice Mayor Pierce chime in a little bit, too, but you have a short report in your packages. We received a total of four proposals, including one that had noted in their cover letter that it would be very convenient for them to meet with us since day two, have offices in Southern California. We did not continue.
Which one was that?
It was not one of the two that we then selected. So what, what we did in the subcommittee, we narrowed the four down to two, and then we set up and held interviews with the principals of those two companies that seemed to come out on the top, based on the initial review of the proposals. We are recommending today to the full council engagement of Pam Derby from CPS HR Consulting, and she's also here, so we'll let her speak in a moment. But if you have, you have the summaries in your package, and if you look at the summaries of those proposals, you'll see that the pricing between the four was actually very similar. So really, I think it comes down to who understands Clayton best, and kind of who has the right approach, as well as the right connections to be able to be successful in this task. I think we have a tough task to, ahead of us, from the perspective that we have some big shoes to fill in. So I think we need somebody who's definitely understands Clayton and knows what they're doing. So Vice Mayor Pierce, do you want to say any words?
Sure, I would just add a couple of things. I also have the advantage of having just recently worked with Pam Derby on the recruitment for the Metropolitan Transportation Commission Executive Director, and got to know her through that work on the executive committee there. And I was very, very impressed with her ability to tune in to the real needs of not just the agency and the staff, which was really astute, but to also gauge the sense of the community, the, the board needs, what really would be a good fit personality-wise. And when we're talking about someone as central to a community as our city manager, having that right personal fit is incredibly important. And, you know, choosing that person is not easy. But Pam has the expertise, she's got the connections, she's done a lot of these, she gets what a small city is all about, she's done big recruitments, too, very, very well. Obviously, MTC is not a small organization. But, you know, she, she seems to think we can do it for what we might be able to afford, so I'm going to let her talk. But if you have any questions of us, certainly ask.
Why don't we invite Ms. Derby, if you want, can come up and maybe say a few words, and then answer any questions the council might have?
Maybe about how you anticipate this going forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for having me. My anticipation would be that hopefully I would get to speak with each one of you individually if we are awarded this contract. One of the things we want to do is find out what you're all looking for. This is a small community. I would imagine that there are some community stakeholders that you'd like me to do some engagement with, to find out what they're looking for. We've done that on a small scale, we've done it on a large scale. For MTC, it involved speaking with more than, it was almost 75 individuals. Prior to that, I had done Sand Egg. And again, we did five community meetings for that, foreign employee engagement meetings. But I would anticipate coming and spending a couple of days in Clayton, that there would probably be, whether it's the president of the chamber, individuals like that, that there might be, you know, certainly senior staff we want to speak with. One of the things we, other things we could do is deploy an online survey, that there could be a link on the website that anyone could come in and give their opinions on what they're, they think the city should be looking for in a city manager. We'll put together all the marketing materials. We have just completed East Palo Alto, Union City just wrapped up last week, City of Richmond, all those city manager recruitments in the past year. So we already have a stable of individuals that we know are looking from now. But one of the things that we pride ourselves on is the deep outreach that we do to the candidates that we think would fit your position. I'm also from a small community. My background, I've been at CPS now, I'm in my 16th year, and I was the aide to the Board of Supervisors in Yuba County prior to that. And so I understand, you know, how important the city manager is to the community, what visibility you're looking for, and those are the kinds of things that we'd like to bring to this recruitment.
Great, thank you. Would any council members like to ask any questions?
Let me just follow up with that a little bit. For the MTC recruitment, we actually did do an online survey, and we did an online survey of not just the commissioners, but of the general public. And, and they were discreet surveys, so that the results, you know, weren't skewed one way or the other. And I thought the results of that were incredibly enlightening, and it allowed everyone to say whatever they wanted to say, and Pam got the results, and the rest of us didn't see anything but kind of a summary of, of what the aspirations were for the agency. And I think for the broader MTC community, you know, from slow-growth or no-growth communities to big cities and little cities, and urban and rural and all of that, there were a lot of different requirements that, that people had to be balanced. And I think we might get something similar from here, and I think that, that would be helpful.
And, and that's something that you, you can do as part of your services, as you mentioned.
Yes, that would be included, absolutely.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Diaz?
I'm sure that your firm has a huge amount of experience in this, but I, I just offer this as a suggestion, that when you finally get down to a select number of candidates, and I don't know what that is, that you make sure you not only talk with the, the business community in Clayton, but there are people such as our library foundation, our historical society, our garden club, and so forth. And hopefully you would have a, a couple of panels of citizens, one that would represent those individuals, others just the community at large, and I would also assume that you would have, in addition to the City Council, a, a group of, of other city professionals, such as other city managers, to participate in that.
Yes, Councilmember Diaz, that is a type of process that we employ all the time. Certainly, if you bring in, in California, which is different in some states, but in California, applicants can remain anonymous, basically confidential, until someone's appointed. They never have to come forward. And so I will say, though, in Richmond, when we got down to the final three, because of the scrutiny and transparency there, we actually did a community forum with the final three candidates, who, I called it the Oprah Tour, and they did a, you know, we did a community forum there with all three, three finalists. But we usually would do, have them sign an NDA, and, you know, are happy to do that. And I suggest that's what And I suggest that's what happens, just so the council feels like they've really been able to vet the candidates.
Great, thank you.
And you do, you mentioned that you do interview staff. I mean, you, you want to interview, I guess, all five of us individually, but then you also, so what are you looking from staff? Just different perspectives as well, or?
I'm looking for different perspectives from them as well. And I always let councils know that this information isn't necessarily, we're not going to put all of this in the marketing materials, but a lot of it helps inform me, the questions I want to ask during screening interviews, what I'm looking for in these candidates, because as the vice mayor said, it is about the fit, especially in an organization this size. And so it's really important to hear what staff is feeling, you know, that's anonymous. You know, I, I don't share the, that background necessarily. I want them to feel like they're, as if we're in a safe place to talk to me, but it really helps me when I'm speaking with candidates.
And then can, so the other thing to, we've mentioned a little bit, is the online survey. So can you kind of describe a little bit when you've used it, kind of, you know, so you're looking for engagement from the general public, so that they can also provide feedback, and that is anonymous, I guess, as well? Can you elaborate a little bit on that as well?
Sure. So usually, that's a good way also to poll the rest of your employees, because I can't speak to all of them. Or we could do a employee forum, but I think it's easier for them, so that they can address that as well. So we, we usually just use Survey Monkey, which is very easy. We usually only ask three or four questions, open-ended. Sometimes we'll use a ranking situation of which, you know, characteristics do you think are the most important? But I really find the best information you get is just, just to say, you know, what are the top five professional characteristics you're looking for? What are the top five personal characteristics? What are the three or four things that you think are most important for this individual to work on? And then provide open comments. And it's interesting, you know, sometimes you will find a nugget in there that's something you haven't heard from anybody else, that brings up something to us to say, hey, what's, what's this about? And then we provide all that information back to you, but it comes in anonymously. For MTC, we received between 250 and 300 responses. Year before last, I did the executive director for the Coastal Commission, which of course is highly controversial. We had over 600 responses to that survey, because it was deployed statewide. Obviously, they have stakeholders throughout the state. I couldn't speak with all of them, so.
Okay, great, thank you. If there are no other questions, do you have a question?
Yeah, in the, in the materials, it, it describes a timeline of approximately four months. Does that, how does that match up with previous experience?
It's, it usually takes three to four months. What, what usually holds up a board or council-appointed position is being able to get all of you together and scheduling those meetings for you. I mean, we might be able to do it in a 90-day period, but that just depends on when we can get you together, and especially if we're talking about doing these other assessment-type situations with, you know, other city managers and the community. It takes a lot of logistical planning to make that happen. And so really, for a thorough city manager search, that four-month period is really about what you're looking at.
So then you describe some of the things that could be included in the, in the overall approach. When do you finalize the actual approach?
Well, that would be, number one, if we're awarded the contract tonight, I would start scheduling conversations with the five of you immediately to start getting your feedback. I know that your schedule over the rest of the summer is rather scattered, and so I'd probably be working with the mayor and vice mayor on the schedule and the work plan, and we'd be finalizing that, all of that in the next week to 10 days.
Okay.
And then one other point, so you don't have the full proposals between the four, but in terms of timeline, that timing was actually very consistent with all four proposals, so I think, I think we're in the right spot, if all four.
I think the availability of a couple of them was a little less available, but it really was a consistent timeline. I think one of the other things that we can do is we can always hold a special meeting if we need to, to keep the timeline rolling. That's not a full council meeting with a regular agenda. It would be just for the purpose of meeting with, with the recruiter.
Correct.
And where are you based out of?
Sacramento.
Sacramento, okay.
We are actually a joint powers authority, so we're a quasi-governmental agency ourselves.
That's got to be fun.
Great, thank you. So if there are no other questions, please hold on, I want to open up for public comment as well. So, thank you. So I do want to open up for public comment. Again, no speaker cards, but if anyone would like to address the council, please come on up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and then bring it up, up for the full council. And I think what we're looking for is, at this point, you have the subcommittee's recommendation to engage Ms. Derby and her company, so we're looking for a motion and/or further discussion.
Just one clarifying, the 25,000, that's both, that's an all-in cost, including travel.
Yes, yeah.
And if, in the event that we're, that we're unsuccessful in filling the position over a certain time window, does that, is there like a clock or some time limit, since it's not to exceed?
The payment.
Sorry, I should have asked you that earlier.
No, that professional fee is until we place someone. We also provide a year guarantee, so that if the person comes on board and for some reason they leave within, with any reason in the first year, we'll redo the recruitment for only the reimbursable expenses. There's no additional professional fee. Certainly, what happens sometimes if we have to go out again for some reason, is that we have to do an amendment for the expenses, but for a city manager search, the expenses are not as expensive as some other types of recruitments, where the advertising is more expensive. City manager searches, the advertising usually is about $1,500 is all, and so that helps keep it down. Of course, I'm driving here, you know, I don't have to fly, I'm leaving for Missouri tomorrow, I'm doing the city manager search in Columbia, so. So it's pretty easy for us to keep the costs down, so that if, heaven forbid, we have to go out again, that there's still enough left in that budget to do that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So no other comments? Oh, Mr. Napper.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question for you is, you had appointed a ad hoc committee, it was a steering committee, and I'm envisioning that that will continue to work as the point of the spear with the executive recruiter, because there'll be opportunities where there'll need to be interaction. So I just am wanting to make certain that the council's comfortable, once again, with that steering committee, recruitment steering committee, working in that fashion.
And then the decision points obviously come back to the full council.
Correct.
And I think she had mentioned that she would talk to each of us anyway, so.
Yep, absolutely. And I found during the times that I've worked with Pam, I literally could just drop her a note any time when I, something occurred to me, and she was there, oh, good to know, thanks.
That's what I do to Gary after he retires.
I'm changing my number.
But, but she is very responsive, so, you know, we don't need to deluge her, but obviously, if something important comes up, she is very accessible. So if nobody else has any issues, I would like to move that we hire CPS to do the city manager recruitment for the city of Clayton.
Did we do the public commentary?
I already did, yeah.
That's what you were saying.
Yeah, we did open for public comment.
I miss anybody that wanted to speak.
Do we second that?
Surprising.
It would be nice to.
Second that.
Okay, so that has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Derby, for coming here.
Thank you, Pam.
Talk to you soon.
Yes.
Did she sign all right?
So then that moves us into action item 8B, which is consideration of resolution approving a one-year memorandum of agreement, MOA, with the city of Clayton's undesignated miscellaneous employees unit, encompassing a 4.25% adjustment to the salary ranges of the, this unit's job classifications effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. I believe we have a report from Mr. Napper.
Thank you, Mayor Catalano. And just trying to wrap up the strings before I depart, this is one of the items. This has to do with the undesignated miscellaneous group. They are not what we call a recognized group, which means they're not formed as a union or an association, much like the Peace Officers Association is, but this group represents the largest and most diverse job classifications of the rest of the city. So it involves 16 individuals. The MOA memorandum of agreement is expiring on June 30, coming up, and we've been in discussions with the group and their representatives. There was some exchange of proposals. That group, its three-year, you know, MO, excuse me, MOA, had a three-year cost of living increase for each of the last three years, so compounded, it was a little over 9%. The CPI during that same time period ran about 8.73%. And that actually is good, because as you know, as one of the smallest cities in the county, our salary schedules are behind most of the other public agencies, so making a little headway in that regard is not bad. With the proposal that they presented to myself, we met, I met with the city council, received your instructions, went back, and what we have tonight is a resolution of approval regarding the one-year package that's coming up for the next year. We went primarily with a one-year package, because we felt that it was important that the next city manager have the opportunity not to be, you know, handcuffed regarding any ongoing long obligations of the city in that respect. So this proposal, before the city councils, we've put up, is a cost of living adjustment to the salary ranges of all job classifications in unit, is in the unit, it would be 4.25% across the board. 4.25% in terms of relativity. This coming fiscal year, the Peace Officers Association will receive a 4.5% across the board increase. However, they are giving some, a little bit of concessions back regarding payment of the CalPERS employer rate. This group is not doing that. We are actually putting this on as a business or an action item, because the group does represent some of the higher-paid employees of the city, including management, and so under recent state law, it must be done as an action item. We haven't calculated what that 4.25% salary range adjustment will cost the city, and it's $59,491. That's not the money that will be returned to the employees. We always cost the package as, in terms of what it will cost you as the employer. And so it'll be something less in their pocket regarding that. Of that amount of $45,000 and some change will affect the general fund. The balance is that some of the classifications in the miscellaneous group charge out to separate enterprise and revenue funds. So this is the opportunity now for council to approve the resolution. This package has been accepted by the individual employees. In terms of payment for it, that, I note that in the budget you recently approved, there was a general fund excess of, in a conservative estimate of around $39,750. I do note in the staff report that we're aware that there's the Wayfair internet sales decision that has yet to sprinkle itself in terms of sales tax in the coming year, and to be conservative, we did not put any money for that. Also, real property taxes continue to be on the upswing, and we think there might be around a $19,000 wedge in there to the positive. So we think that any gap of around $5,676, it will be sufficiently covered by either those two items, and if not, I noted in the staff report that the projected fiscal year that we're in right now will close with around $195,000 to the good, which means that there is some give in our budget, as you well know, and from previous years, there's some give in terms of conservatively estimating revenues and conservatively estimating expenses and then coming under in that budget. So I think there's enough within the, what I'm saying is enough within the budget going forward, that this package can be accomplished fiscally. And that's my report, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Okay, let's open up for public comment. Again, no speaker cards, but if anyone would like to come up, please do. So seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for any discussion, and then action.
Well-earned.
Councilmember Juan.
Yes, well-earned, thank you.
I would move approval of the resolution authorizing and approving the one-year memorandum of agreement with the Clayton Undesignated Miscellaneous Cities Employees Unit regarding certain terms and conditions of their employment and compensation with the city of Clayton effective July 1, 2019, continuing through June 30 of 2020.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Which moves us into item 8C, which is the consideration of resolution approving a second amendment to the General Counsel Legal Services Agreement between the city of Clayton and Clayton Successor Agency and the law firm of Best Bestin Krieger, LOP, for annual adjustments in legal counsel retainer rates and services. And I believe we have a report also from Mr. Napper.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Since 2011, the city has contracted with the public law firm of Best Bestin Krieger. That's actually the firm that produces and supports the city for legal counsel services. From within that law firm, and during the request for proposals and interview process, that law firm submitted the, one of the partners of that, Mala Subramanian, as the individual in which to be the designated city attorney. Since that time period, there has been only one increase or adjustment in rates. I know, working side by side with our city attorney, that she's very sensitive to the plight of small cities and their resources and limited resources. Her, the current, you know, retainer, excuse me, right now, for her firm to perform the general services is $8,500 a month. That's an annual cost of $102,000 per year. I think if you looked in at the salary schedule of, of the employees and whatnot, you can readily see that, you know, that's not overly excessive in terms of what law firms or lawyers will charge in today's time. Since that time period, you know, as we were going through the budget, our city attorney contacted me and indicated that it's been three years since that last increase, and she would like to consider an increase, because number one, the city now has a contract with our city engineering firm that has a retainer that is, has an automatic cost of living adjustment to it. And so the recommendation in the proposal is that taking that $8,500 per month and applying the increase in the CPI during the last three years since, but applying that, which is 11.4%, applying that prospectively and going forward, starting July 1, that would raise the retainer to $9,470, which is an annual proposition of $113,640. And then secondarily, to avoid what kind of we experienced just recently, is, whoa, you want an adjustment and whatnot, how does that impact the budget? Wish we, you know, had thought about that before. To avoid that going forward, and to give equity and parity with the city engineering firm that we have with Harrison Associates, we are recommending that going forward, the annual CPI, be it, you know, in the retainer, be adjusted for the same time period of April to April. And we use April to April, because that's the same adjustment period we use for the rest of the fees and budgets and calculations in our city operations. So that is the essential recommendation. I'm supportive of both of those. What it would mean is that it will have a general fund impact, if approved, of an adjustment of $11,640. And then taking an average of the special legal services rates over the time period, that would also add another $3,366. So the gap would be, from what is adopted in your budget, would be approximately $15,000, and for all the same reasons as indicated, for the miscellaneous employees, the elasticity of the general fund budget, the conservative nature of this, and culture of this organization to estimate revenues conservatively and keep our operations below expenditures, it's my submission to you that there's sufficient elasticity within the general fund budget of the city to approve that. And so it's my recommendation that the city council adopt the resolution that would make those changes going forward. Will you have any other questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Napper or our city attorney? No? So then let's, I think we're taking public comment on this one, too. So let's open up for public comment. Again, no speaker cards, but I'm looking into our large audience to see if anybody would like to. like to come up. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and then action.
There's five times more of us than that.
Yeah. When we have the audience, I think we need to lock the doors, make them stay.
Warriors playing, what's going on?
No, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's right. Is it okay for Mala to be in the room when we're talking about all of this?
I'm happy to leave. She is a member of the public at this point, too.
Leave early, not come back. I mean, because we're literally talking.
These are public comments.
That's right.
That's right.
She is a member of the public.
You can, you can opine on that.
I'm happy to leave. Well, if nobody else is going to say anything, I will move approval of the.
I do have, I do have some.
Do you?
Yeah, I do have some discussion. I mean, I, you know, I think it's important that we, you know, that we're vigilant acting as stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And I, you know, I read through the report and it was well-written, although I don't, I don't think I agree that following along with the form of our city engineer's contract is a viable, is a valid reason to say that this should be like that one. They're separate agreements, and so they don't necessarily have to be together. They could be, I think, for, for, as you said, for equity, but I don't think that's necessarily has to be the case. And then I note that there was, it's an 11% approximate increase, which is a cumulative catch-up over a three-year CPI. So I'm wondering if, I mean, I know that this is the first rate proposed, or proposed rate increase. Is that, like, I don't know if it makes sense to go, to do a three-year look back on that. And then I, you know, I tend to think that the rate should be based on a market rate rather than, well, based on a market rate in general. And so I'm not clear that, there's no mention that there's a comparison of other similarly situated resources. So in that, in that regard, I don't know if that, the basis for that is, is well-supported in that, you know, because it wasn't, there's no indication that there's a market comparison. And also, I'm generally opposed to automatic increases. I think that those should be done on a case-by-case basis. I know that there's discussion that, or there was mention in the staff report that said that it's easier to budget that way when you have this regular increase. And that, that may be the case, but I don't think it's a hardship to have that somewhat uncertainty for the CPI increase. But I think that locking ourselves into that type of increase over, you know, over time isn't in the best interest of the taxpayer dollar. So I would say that the rate increase should be taken, any rate increase should generally be taken on a case-by-case basis. That's, that's, that would be my preference. So.
Okay, let me, let me, can I actually ask the city attorney to maybe respond to that? So you're a little concerned about the amount of the rate and kind of how that compares in market? And I don't really know what the, I know what in private sector we charge and.
A lot.
A bit more. But I mean, so I'm looking at, I guess, the contract, the second amendment here that we have in front of us. And so it would be a retainer of $9,470 per month, estimated to be an average of 40 to 45 hours of work per month. And that translates, I think, to about $210 to $237 an hour, which to me doesn't sound high, but I would love to have some perspective as well, what that means in the, in the sort of the government sector in terms of city attorney fees, if you could provide.
Sure, I'm happy to tell you that it's lower than what we, we charge for many of our other public agency clients, including other cities. And I think the city manager probably also wants to opine.
Yeah, it's a little awkward to have, you know, her, you know, comment on, on the own increase. But just in terms of relativity, your consent calendar item, you just approved $225 an hour for tree trimming services, which was the lowest bid. When BB&amp;K applied to be the city attorney firm for our city in 2011, they took the lowest amount of monthly retainer of anybody. I, you know, Mala might know this one better than I, but I think in, for comparative purposes, the city of Lafayette, they're not, they're what, 23,000 population? And what's your retainer over there?
It's approximately $20,000.
A month?
Correct.
So I think when, when you begin to take a look at that, no, we didn't do market comparisons because I'm actually, you know, absolutely confident as a professional in this field that this is actually one of the best bargains in terms of legal services that our city can, can do. I think going out for city attorney services, which is not the recommendation here, I don't think it'll produce any savings at all in terms of what a, what a public law firm would be charging in today's time.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yeah, I'm sitting on a number of different boards, one of whom Mala is also the attorney for. I can tell you that we get a good deal here. I can also tell you that the depth of a firm like BB&amp;K has been incredibly valuable to several of the firms that I have, or the agencies that I've worked with. The ability to call on the expertise and the backup has been something that any individual attorney could not master without being some kind of an encyclopedia or something. They just have an incredible amount of depth in the firm. And while Mala is an expert in municipal law and helping us stay on the straight and narrow, they've got other experts on the PERS law and other kinds of things that have been very valuable to some of the other agencies that I've served on. And in fact, we brought in to ABAG, one of their experts for PERS, who's in Southern California, to negotiate an agreement to make sure that our ABAG employees retained their retirement as we merged staff with the, with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, that the retirees of the ABAG agency would continue to have standing. And so, you know, that was a real tricky deal to do, and it took several months. But having their firm there was very helpful. And, and I will tell you, the, the hourly rate for many of the in-house attorneys for other agencies that I sit on is much higher than this. And that's for the in-house attorneys. So, you know, it's, I think we're getting a very good deal, and we're also getting very good advice with a stable of attorneys that can give us what we need when we need it.
I agree that the, that we're comparing apples and oranges with regard to the two agencies, and they really don't have anything to do with each other, as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, when I was in the private sector, I got regular cost of living increases, and then, then there was a merit base on top of that. So I guess the question would be, do we do merit-based increases? Are we just looking at a cost of living increases over the next?
This is a contract.
Well, this is outside service, so it's contractual. It's not like an employee base where you'd have, you got COLA? I never got COLA. I've never gotten COLA, like, ever.
I'm able to retire.
Yeah. All right, yeah. I mean, I think for outside service, it's, it's a little different, you know, I mean, unless you work it into the contract that you have the CPI.
And so that's what I'm saying. Instead of, instead of doing cost of living increases, are we talking about merit-based increases? Are we going to review them every year? And does that really make much sense if we're already spending less money on this type of service than we would be if we went out to the, to a different agency?
Isn't this an annual renewal anyway?
No, it has a termination clause. It's on either party.
Automatic renewal.
But, yeah, but it, exactly. And so it's, it's a mutual satisfaction relationship. So we can review at any time if we don't feel satisfied with the services that we're getting. But in my experience, at least the last eight years, BB&amp;K has provided any of the expertise that we have needed, depending on, on what our situation was, whether it was dealing with a torn-up playfield or with something else.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, for me, I think, just from a principle point of view, having the automatic increase is, it builds in structural costs, and it'd be my preference to strike the automatic increase. More singling about the, the actual proposed rate amount, but I think the automatic increase is something that should be addressed on a, on a case-by-case.
But, but we do get that opportunity?
No, in this, in the current draft, that, there is no opportunity. It's an automatic increase.
So Vice Mayor Pierce was talking about what we, what would be reviewing every year, then?
There's only a review if, if it comes up, if it's a discussion item. Otherwise, if, if you, the status quo would continue and perpetuate.
Yeah, it's an evergreen contract. And I would suggest that a, keeping up with the cost of living is easier on the budget than a 12% hit every three years, as we just experienced with, with the city employees. So I don't have a problem with that. And should something happen, you know, we can always renegotiate the contract.
So I think from my perspective, I think we're definitely better off having a city attorney from a firm that has that, a lot of experience, as opposed to having just one individual. I'm not convinced, I have no reason to believe that we would be better off in rates with any other firm, so I.
Oh, yeah, I don't think that's on the table, though, right?
No, I mean, no, but hold on. And I, I think I've at least been happy with the service that BPK has provided. So I'm comfortable with this. And I honestly, at, at hourly rate in the low 200s, we're not paying a lot for city attorney services. And let me.
Shh, don't tell her.
I'm not going to. But I would also remind us, and we're all painfully aware, in the last few months alone, we've lost our city manager, our community development director, our finance manager, and our code enforcement officer. I think it'd be foolish for us to not do this cost of living adjustment. So I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
Well, there are two separate things, right? It's the cost of living adjustment and then the, the automatic, the, sorry, the automatic increase. So are you, you're in favor of both? I'm hearing you say.
Correct.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I might, operationally, one of the things that the city council is probably not aware of, but since I review the legal bills, that retainer that the firm operates under, that's a cap. And I can tell you that during the last two years, the law firm has written off many more hours than they get paid for under the retainer. And that's a factor to consider as well.
Right. Well, I would then again make a motion to approve the proposed second amendment to the General Counsel Legal Services Agreement, as included in the packet between the city and its associated public entities and the law firm of Best Bestin Krieger, LLP.
Can I, can I make an amendment to strike that portion to your motion?
You can propose a friendly amendment if the motion maker will accept it, certainly.
To strike what?
The automatic, I can pull up the, the provision.
You mean the CPI increase?
Yes.
No. No, I think it should be included. That's not accepted.
So we do have one motion, is there a second?
It's a CPI increase per year automatically.
CPI versus COLA?
Yeah.
It's a key question because there are two different.
Hold on, hold on.
No public comment is closed, but.
And we can't catch.
The packet specifically refers to a CPI increase. And that's as measured from April to April. That's the recommendation.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
So we have a first and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll be opposed.
So that passes four to one with Councilmember Juan opposing. And then that moves us into item 8D, which is city council discussion of canceling any regularly scheduled council meetings in July, August, and/or September 2019 relative to quorum availability and summer travel plans. Mr. Napper?
Thank you, Mayor Catalano. This is a annual routine item in which we bring to you for your consideration whether you wish to cancel any meetings moving forward into the summer time period. Several reasons for that. Number one, city council members themselves will have various vacation or family plans that may have difficulty constituting a quorum. Number two, staff itself may not be available, and so work begins to wind down during that summertime period. And number three, given the proclivity of our community, we have seen during the summer that many of them go out of town themselves. And so the conduct of some of the public's more important business is not available in which to handle some of those items. So the upcoming meetings that you have, the next one will be July 2nd. That is several days before the Independence Day holiday, so you could consider canceling that one. Typically, over the last several years, there's been one meeting held per month. So if you take a look at that, and in terms of your own schedules, the second meeting in, in July, July 16th, that is the time period which we handle many of the annual assessments of our special districts, including the Geological Hazard Abatement District. That public hearing has already been set for that date, so that would be a date that I would want to have continue. As we move into August, there's no pressing items. We do have some items that are still out there, such as the Regency Parking Pilot Program, as well as continued discussion regarding safety around, pedestrian safety around our school as well. We're tracking those. But when I say there's no pressing, there isn't actually an urgency in which to handle those items, although the Regency Drive neighborhood might take exception to that comment. And then finally, the meeting in September 3rd, that's right after the Labor Day holiday, in which has typically been canceled. But it's up to you, these are your meetings. We're here to assist you and take your recommendation accordingly.
Great, thank you. So it sounds like at least the recommendation is to keep the June 18th and July 16th for sure. Should we poll ourselves between the July 2nd, August 6th, August 20th, and September 3rd dates as to whether anyone is going to be out, in terms of whether we have quorum issues? I know for a fact I'll be out on August 6th.
I will as well.
I will as well.
Okay, so we don't have a quorum for August 6th already, so.
Well, we want to do it.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We don't want to touch you.
Okay. You can't do anything, but you can, you can get together.
It's called a committee of the whole.
Yeah.
By Robert's Rules of Order, for those of you that may be interested.
So it sounds like we've already eliminated August 6th. Are there any other dates when anybody's going to be out?
I'm here on all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no problem either way.
Okay.
Yeah, August 6th is the only day I have a problem with, and I think most of us are going to be here for the 4th of July, so, you know, even the 2nd, if we had something that came up, could be done. One comment I would make is that we may need to call special meetings for the recruitment and that process. But I'd also like to add, and maybe Gary, you can make a note of this, I'd like to put as a placeholder on future agendas through the rest of this calendar year, any reports for CCTA and any actions we might need to take to give feedback to the Country Transit Authority. We plan to bring an expenditure plan to the cities for approval in September and early October at the latest, and we need a majority of the cities representing a majority of the population to approve that in order to go forward with any measure. And I'd like to be able to give updates to the council and get feedback as we go forward through the summer. So, I mean, one meeting a month is fine, I think, given the meetings that we'll be having at the Transportation Authority and, and that sort of thing. But I, I'd like it on there so that it's a regular item that we could actually have some discussion on if we need to.
Well, you could discuss it under reports, but if you're looking for direction from your colleagues.
Yeah, that's why I would like it.
And it needs to be a continuous action item moving forward.
Yeah, as a placeholder.
Very. Is that in reference to the item that you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting about the half cent?
Yep.
Okay.
It is, and I'd like to be able to keep you continually updated on that, so there's no surprises.
Then you mentioned potential for special meetings with regard to the city manager vacancy. For the, I know that we have, obviously, as you mentioned, we have other vacancies as well. Is, how is that going to work logistically if the city manager typically is going to be hiring the finance manager, but the finance manager applications, I don't recall the exact, when, when's the close period for that? You had mentioned it before, but I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, the community development director went out, and we didn't get any real outstanding pool. I think we had one. So we're out again. My plan at this point in time is to put those advertisements out. My plan at this point in time is to put those advertisements out, collect interest that we have. But I think, as I've indicated to you, I think your next city manager should be the one to actually hire those individuals and go through those screenings. So there's no downside to collecting those applications and then letting the candidates know that the next city manager will be going through those as well. And the interim basis, I have, you know, Mr. Waltering has come back and has agreed to continue. One of the, one of the reasons, actually, as I talked about here in terms of community, he felt an affinity with the organization, and I think he felt a relationship with the community as well. So he's doing that out of his heart, if you will, although at times I've seen him, you know, straying in terms of what's on the plate. The interim finance manager, I have an individual and a candidate in mind, and I will be putting that individual in place as Mr. Mizuno takes off. So you'll have two interims as the department heads. The code enforcement officer, I've also solved that one, will be bringing back the former code enforcement officer who is available, that left, many of you know her, as Jessica. And I'm putting her on an hourly employment agreement, so once again, to allow her boss to make that decision in terms of the ultimate finance manager. So I think you're actually set. I've tried to make sure that once I leave, that everything is all set and in place. And then I think at some point in time, you will have an interim city manager in which you'll want to take a look at, and the city council can go into closed session in which to make those, to conduct that interview. So hopefully that answers your question, council member.
Yeah, yeah. I was just trying to lay out the four-month window, because if we're delaying on actual hiring decisions until the new city manager, and then there's a, probably a minimum of a four-month window.
September, October.
Then we're looking at September. So that pretty much covers the whole schedule here. So I was trying to align which meetings we may cancel if it impacts the, those types of decisions.
Yeah, I think.
But it doesn't look like it's going to.
I thought of that as well, and I thought you're going to be probably active the end of September, and then the new city manager in October or thereabouts. Because even with the four-month time period, if the individual, let's say, lives out of the area, there's a relocation cost, or whatever the case may be.
So, I mean, given that four-month window, are we, is our expectation, that as you just mentioned, that we're going to be appointing an interim city manager? How, how does that fit into this schedule? I'm trying to keep it related to the agenda topic.
You don't, you don't need to do that on a regular meeting.
No.
So as indicated, you know, again, the executive steering committee can indicate, and the mayor can call a special meeting. That special meeting would not be called, except there be a poll to the rest of you to make certain that all of you could attend that meeting, and then whoever that candidate might be, or candidates might be, you would be, you would meet in a closed session, special meeting in which to conduct those interviews.
Okay.
And determine suitability.
Do we have, is there an expectation on timeframe for that?
Probably in August.
Because your, your, your last day with us is the end of July.
My last day is actually July 26th, which means then I go on retirement starting July 27th. But I'll be around in July, even though I'll be on vacation, I'll be in the community. So I'll be in and out of City Hall, you know, primarily to clean up Laura's office, no, my office.
Good luck. You'll be here till next July.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Did I, did I miss something there?
Really.
So, but I, you know, I do know that we have received the interest of one individual to be your interim city manager, and the individual has been a prior city manager. But that, that's a decision up to you folks.
So then, the other outstanding items that have, are still sitting with staff waiting to come back, I, I know that there, on the, on the proposed dates here, there's, there's the two meetings, July, oh, sorry, June 18th and July 16th, there's two somewhat significant items. But then, do we have an expectation on when those would come back, given staff constraints? Is there, would those come back during the summer period, do we think? So that's, and those two items I'm referring to is like, as you mentioned, the Regency Parking issue, as well as the, the traffic and pedestrian safety issue that we had talked about previously.
Yeah, as, as I indicated, the Regency Park Pilot Program, I spoke to the city engineer just today, and he indicated he's waiting for a, a third proposal for the installation of the poles and the signs. As I indicated to the Ukrainian delegation yesterday, part of the difficulty, and it seems like it takes forever in which to get quotes, is Clayton has such small projects, contractors really aren't interested in, in filling their calendar with small contracts, they're interested in filling their calendar with more lucrative arrangements. So it's difficult to find someone who would quote on, let's say, a $10,000 cost or whatever. But that's what our rules require, is at least three quotes. So he's working on that, and as soon as that's available. I know the staff report is primarily written, that could appear on, you know, June 18th, and if not, then it would go for July 16th. However, if, if you feel that that's the summertime period, and that the neighborhood would look askance at having that be held during the time period, that a good portion of the community would be absent, then it could, you know, be delayed further. But I know that they're eager to move forward. Regarding the traffic around the schools and whatnot, the same city engineer is, is working on that. And I don't have a time period on when that's going to come back, but I'm, I don't think you want that to come back during the summer, because many of the parents and the families that might be interested would, would be out of town.
I think a lot of school staff is usually off in July, too. I think they work in June, and then they come back in August.
They gear up in the end of August.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're still able to address all the items if we do any cancellations, that's all.
And we can always call a special meeting if we need to, if something really needs to.
Absolutely.
Take place.
Because, I don't know, I think we all indicated which meeting we're going to be gone, and for the most part, we're going to be around.
Okay, so what's the pleasure of the council? I know we're out, so definitely nothing on August 6th, since we don't have a quorum. But what do we want to do about July 2nd? And we want to keep at least one in August, so we'll keep the August 20th. But then, what about the day before, day after Labor Day, September 3rd? So I think those are the two to decide.
So repeat, what meetings you're going to propose to cancel?
So we're gonna, we're gonna cancel August 6th, since we do not have a quorum. So then it's, do we want to cancel July 2nd during the Fourth of July week? And/or do we want to cancel September 3rd, which is day after Labor Day? So that leaves us with one meeting at least every month.
So unless we need a special meeting for some reason, I would suggest we cancel the first meeting of each month, July, August, and September.
I think in the past, what we've done, it's been two, I think we've canceled two each year for the past.
We've canceled three.
Was it three?
Yeah, in the summer.
Three.
Yeah. It's usually the same Fourth of July, and then the first one in August, because a lot of people take off in August. And then the Labor Day one is, is usually a, a canceled one. But, you know, we could sort of keep those in our back pocket if we need them for a special meeting, if we're all going to be around.
I think, yeah, at least, that's, I'd probably keep the 3rd for now, but cancel the 2nd, or sorry, July 2nd, and definitely August 6th is well gone. So the two, and then leave the others.
I'm okay with that.
Because.
Because we might need it in September. We don't know what we're going to need in September.
I'm here the whole time, so.
Okay. So let me, actually, I need to open up a public comment, so I don't have any speaker cards, but if either of you would like to mention anything, seeing none, we'll close public, public comments. So I'll make a motion then to cancel Tuesday, July 2nd, and Tuesday, August 6th.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Are you driving for getting this Regency Park issue resolved by middle of July?
No, I mean, I think it'll get resolved whenever they're, if they come back.
I'm just telling you, because I'm so, I keep getting roped into this thing, and I'm getting a little, I don't want to get involved in it if I don't have to.
Yeah, I think, I mean, my intent, along with Councilmember Wolf, has always been to get it resolved as fast as possible.
Let me just urge you to move it along if you can.
Yes, I would like to move it along as fast as possible. I think we're constrained by time and.
Getting a third bid.
Time and resources, and so I, if, if there's assistance needed, I'd be glad to render it, but I don't know that I could do that. So I would like it to go as fast as possible. That's why I'm asking about it. That's why I bring it up.
I don't think it's up to us.
I mean, to add on to that, I think that the, the.
Well, I know, but they certainly have a lot of influence, because they're the, they're the special committee that's working on it.
Yeah. Well, I think we've done as much as we can do up to this point, we've put it in the hands of the city engineer. And I think the Regency Drive residents understand that it's not going to happen probably until September or so.
At the earliest.
And I think they're resolved to that.
At the earliest.
At the earliest.
Yeah. And I, you know, we, both Councilmember Wolf and I have spoken with the city engineer multiple times, as well as Mr. Napper, and I think that we are trying to encourage as much as possible without pestering, so.
Yeah, they, they only have, as, as we've chatted about before, they only have so much time to, any single second, they can only work on one item at a time.
That's right.
And, and the difficulty is hampered by the fact that it's, he's having difficulty finding a third quote, which is part of our requirements, according to municipal code. So while we didn't go out to bid, you know, because the price amount was not very high, it's now getting those informal quotes in which the selection can be made. But as I indicated, the staff report's already written.
I mean, in theory, you could waive it, but not today.
Yeah.
You could, you know, and that would accelerate the process probably.
Well, what, you know, he has to be allowed a diligent effort, and if he says, hey, I, you know, comes to me and says, look, I've tried, I can, I only get the two, well, then we will bring it to you to say, look, you know, the third effort, the third, you know, firm or quote couldn't be obtained despite our best efforts. So there's no, there's no reason to, you know, from the staff level, and there certainly isn't any reason from the committee to be delaying the item.
Right.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second on that motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Are there any future requests for future meetings? Seeing none.
Other than putting the CCTA report on for potential discussion if we need it.
Okay.
Do you want to start the next meeting, Vice Mayor?
I would.